We have a quorum. But however, however, any action of the Board of Appeals has to be supported by a majority of the membership of the Board, which under our statute is five. So any action you take tonight would would have to be supported by unanimously by three members. I don't, I don't know if the applicants want to proceed on that basis or not. As far as I know, no. Yeah, I think that that will be up to, they're gonna have to elect a chair right now. That'll be up to the chair. Wait one second. First of all, I need a who wants to be chairman?
Angie, it looks like there's folks in the waiting room meeting. Is that correct?
Okay.
So I think what you've done, I was told what you have done in the past meetings and someone moves to nominate someone as chair and then someone seconds that motion and vote.
You guys keep asking me to update and I'm not, it's not the good time. Who's many people there?
That's just the people running it, right?
Yeah, but there's like that chair is empty there.
Did you mute participants? Thank you. Sorry, Evie.
If Ms. Zepthing is willing, I make a motion to have Lindsay Zepthing be the chair for this evening based on her experience in engineering and other functions for the city.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Motion carries.
All right, Rick, I'm gonna need your help walking through the meeting, but I believe we start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Correct.
All right. Allegiance, your flag.
Will be the blind reading.
Care with us type please. Um, I believe first item would be meeting minutes of roll call. Thank you. Roll call please. Okay. Evie Dundes.
Here, present.
Stevie Minor.
Here.
Lindsay Zepthen, present. Okay, now, meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from our last meeting?
I would move that the meeting minutes of our last meeting, April 3rd, be approved and adopt.
Second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, so we are on to PLZBA 2024-0017. It is 813 First Avenue. I'm is looking for an area is the applicant here and wish she speak. I'm on, oh, do we have a microphone? Podium and a microphone, yes.
Good evening. My name is Neil Pilon. I'm an architect working with the owner of 813 First Ave. And it's a an empty lot. They're doing a two-unit new construction build. It's in a two-family zoning, but we have a waterfront setback waterfront district overlay. And that has caused the need for some the area variances because the dimensions conflict. There's conflicting requirements. So we're actually looking for two area variances. The first one, the first variance is for section 28541.a requires 720 square feet of the principal use to be constructed on the ground floor. Our ground floor is in a floodplain. So what we are asking and what the building code asks is to minimize the amount of habitable space that is built in the floodplain. So in our case, we have an entry stairs. If you can imagine, the house is on stilts to get to get the house out of floodplain. So there's a piece that comes down. And we'd like to keep that at like 300 whatever square feet as opposed to 720 square feet.
Okay, there was another variance, right?
Right. Well, maybe. So I can't get an interpretation. We can't, no one seems to want to interpret this next section, which is a view shed protection standard from section 285-45D.2, which states that there shall be an opening of at least 30 feet between buildings to provide unobstructed view corridors to the river. Streets and alleys perpendicular to the river may count towards that 30 feet. So we are on a corner. So we have 30 feet in one direction, but we're less than 30 feet in the other direction. Now, when I read this, it is not clear to me whether it has to be 30 feet from any building or we are required to provide one instance of 30 feet. In which case, since we're on the corner, we're allowed to count the street. Do you follow the issue here?
Do you have a picture or a photograph? I took a drive up there. I just wanted to make sure I'm on the same page mentally that you're talking about. Thank you. So there's no house on this lot. It's vacant. And this is the nearest house, which is the last house on the left going north on 121st. 123rd. Talking about this first step. I'm sorry, first step is what I'm talking.
So yeah, it's the very last right across the street.
Yep. But this does not apply to you.
No, but
You're just over here.
Yes. These lot was 35 feet of being required. This seems like it's written for your projects. Maybe more downs.
In my reading of DOT code, which I'll pull, I'm trying to pull up, it was, yeah, Hudson Riverfront Development. Um, interpreted basically to allow the public to still have the view shed of the Hudson River. So a 30-foot separation, that's not required on the, you know, for your street side. No, no separation is required because you've got the street, right? And that provides the view shed, the, you know, the boat launches right there. But I did interpret it that it was required between the two adjacent structures. At least that's how I did. So, right.
To reduce it from 30 to 5.
Yeah. So my question, I guess you can run again, just so everyone recording can pick you up. Um, my question, um, was there's no side setback required, so you could be adjacent to the property line. Um, so basically you're requesting more of a variance than you need. It's how I'm seeing this. Is that correct?
No, it's, no, it's the other way around.
You're, you're requesting a relief of 25 feet. If you were to push the building adjacent to the property line along 20, 123rd Street, then you would need
We're at our setback limit. That's my understanding.
Side setbacks, zero.
That would not be the front side.
There's, we, yeah, we have a corner lot which has different standards where the we
On side setback?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. This might help.
Oh, thank you.
Right. So here's our, here's our property line.
Right.
And I think we need 10 total. So we could, okay, so yeah, if what you're saying is we should move the building all the way to the edge, to the limit on this side.
Yeah.
But then you'd have no space between you and the last house street.
There is no last house on this street. It's the end, their property is my mic is on or off. But sorry.
Okay, so part of the reason why we placed the building where we did is we have an existing driveway. There's all sorts of complications that send us down regulatory dominoes if we make a new driveway on this site. So we're trying to reuse the existing driveway. And if we do what you've suggested, which theoretically could happen, we're gonna end up with structure in the middle of the existing driveway.
What are those regular, like, what are those dominoes? Would it be additionally permitting from other agencies?
Yes. Uh, me, I don't think DEC is involved in this, but it's been a while. We've been going through this for a long time.
All right. So you've already gotten site plan approval.
No, we're not required to go to plan. So I don't want to trigger plan.
Moving the drive removing the driveway?
Touching the ground triggers. Angie, do you remember going through this? We stripped out, we were going to do, we had an original application had an extended driveway, hardscapes, some other stuff done. We took all that out specifically to avoid the complications.
Related to the, the check regarding remediation issues?
I don't, I don't think so. I think we're under the lint right. So I don't think that's like kind of D state levels, but I I think we're okay with that. I just remember going through.
So the driveway, the driveway is here.
That's correct.
But this is proportion of moving it.
Right. So go back to the driveway. So right now, our building sits essentially on the edge of this. And if we move it out to here, six feet, we're in the middle of that driveway. Look, at the end of the day, if that's really
God, if you move it this way, you're gonna be somewhere here. Is that what you're saying?
Not that far. That's the problem. It's gonna split the difference. Anyway, that's the logic of why we picked, right, because we're required for that 10 feet. I'm not sure I read the code as it's 30 foot from any building ever. It just doesn't make sense. Right? Like that entire neighborhood, the neighborhood that we're in, you can't like the setback, the view corridor setback becomes larger than the lots. Right? So these buildings would be required up 30 feet between them, 30 feet between them, 30 feet between them.
Well, and those are existing structures before the new zoning code was developed.
My point is somewhere at the beginning of the zoning code is the idea is to try to match as best you can the character of the neighborhood you're in. But we have a, some conflicting agendas. One is the view corridor, the waterfront overlay for the unobstructed views. Another is flood resilient construction. Does it help at all that we're lifting the building so you can see under it? I thought I'd try it.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, uh, did you guys read through the section of code? Do you want me to read it? That'd be helpful for you guys. Um, land shall be developed in such a way as to maximize public views to the Hudson River, provide new opportunities at the river's edge and make view corridors available from public streets and public spaces. Site layout and design shall consider public views established view corridor locations and shall also consider the important views of the city for the Hudson River. There shall be an opening of at least 30 feet between buildings to provide unobstructed views corridors to the river.
Thank you. And
Right between buildings.
30 feet between the building to your left and your structure.
Yes, an entire
dirt beach shrunk down to five.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. You are correct.
Yes.
Similar to the rest of the, of the idea.
Rest of the neighborhood predates.
You're cool.
So again, I'm trying to figure out a logic.
And you didn't go to plan.
We submitted for planning and then they said, first they said we had to go and then we submitted and we said, yeah.
How far apart are the buildings that currently exist?
Uh, anywhere from about five feet. They get wider 15 feet. They do vary. All right. So we're, we're gonna be building that sort of ghosty box there. But if you look at, right, that's a 30-foot lot, so that's about five feet. It's about five feet. Some of them are bigger. Right? That's about 20, 25 feet. Oh, here, what?
It varies.
Sorry. It varies. Yep.
Can you go back to the house on the end? The last house next to the lot? Put us in front of the black car.
This one?
Yes. There you go.
Are there structural reasons why you couldn't shrink the footprint of the building?
To shrink our area.
Yeah, shrink, shrink your area and move it to the, I mean, I realize your, your back of your building is at 25-foot high watermark. You can encroach on your center line to kind of change basically your, your footprint of the building without losing too much square footage, but like
So we already, we already reduced it to get the frontage requirement ratio correct, which I think is one to five or 100 foot, 20 foot out of.
Your, your front
It's not the setback, it's the frontage. But we, we're, we're not allowed to take up the entire width of the block, right? So we shrunk it the minimum. We're trying to build as much as possible. We're already capped going up as we're lifting the floor.
But, um, because you basically are not maximizing what you have on the site. You can have a zero foot front setback.
Right. But then our building ends up, that's where we end up, way up here. That's gonna look dopey and I think it's gonna hurt the character of the neighborhood. So we tried to balance these considerations. You're, you're correct. By right, we can build like basically right through the middle of that corner. I don't think it's good for the neighborhood. So we've already gone through a round of trying to balance all these dimensions.
Yeah, but what, what is also driving it, I guess, is the, the footprint of the building itself. Can you shrink the footprint of the building?
What do you mean by can? We've already shrunk it. We've already shrunk it from what we want to do.
Okay. Did you guys have other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Just to go back to what Mr. Morrissey expressed tonight, if it's not unanimous, it's down. If you wanted to table this and come back, that's your option. The second question would be, if I'm looking at the lot on the proposed footprint for the building to the right of the building, you have 30 feet to the street or do you not?
The street counts to the, yes, we do.
Yeah.
Why not just go from five feet to 10 feet and move the building another five feet to the right?
So there are other site considerations that led us to choose this variance, the difference between a 20-foot variance and a 25-foot variance. I think I understand your point, which is maximize. That would help the argument that we did everything we absolutely could at the expense of other engineering considerations. Yep.
Evie, do you have other questions?
Uh, yeah, along the lines of feasibility or economics of feasible economics. If you were to make any of the proposed changes, how would that affect the potential economics of this investment?
Right. So we're trying to make use of the existing driveway, which is a concrete driveway. If we have to build a new driveway somewhere else, which we would if we move, where you kind of shimmy the building over. It's a new curb cut. It's new surfaces. All, it's all, all that has to be considered.
And if the footprint shrinks of the building?
Then rental income goes down.
I didn't hear you.
Rent, rental income goes down to unit. It's likely to be owner occupied by one, one of the units.
Do you guys want to discuss?
Yeah.
Um, initial thoughts?
My only initial thought is move the footprint to the right. Go from that five feet to maybe 10. Give yourself a little more room between existing structure on the south side of the building. That would be my thought.
Yeah, I mean, the first variance of, um, you know, the ground floor area because of the nature of it being in the floodway makes a lot of sense to me.
Oh, probably.
Yeah, um, the while I think there are some buildings that are closer together, you know, in keeping with the new zoning code of having more separation between buildings along the riverfront. Right. I'd want to see a greater separation. I don't, I'm not opposed to
I'm thinking fire, emergency, accessibility.
Between the two structures. I mean, 10, 10 to 15 is kind of typical along those, it'll count for a driveway.
Right.
That's what I found is kind of typical along that street.
That's a very good point.
Um,
and that modest, modest train.
You got plenty of room on the right.
Minimum five. Um,
So
A comment to, but
Last, last thing to clarify, I think I know where this is all going. Um, here's the site plan diagram, the streets where we're building or we're proposing to build, which is far less than front setbacks or rear setbacks higher in order to match the neighborhood. So I just want, like, if it turns into shaving off square footage to meet the view shed requirements, it's gonna push us in another direction. I think it's to the detriment of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I have a, before you put it into the public comment.
Yeah.
I think would be very useful, uh, instead of like all these hypothetical, um, inquiries, if we had, if you will, a, a, more of a cost benefit analysis of, you know, if this change occurred, how much it would cost and what would be the changes that would be required and something, some, uh, uh, more of a, a concrete analysis for us to refer to, so we could see the balance of, you know, what's in the neighborhood now versus, you know, the, the investment that has to be made versus safety issue, accident, emergency vehicle, whatever. You know, just to get it, whatever.
So the section we're talking about is a view shed requirement, not a emergency services access.
Yeah, so it is view shed. It is not, yeah, emergency access. View shed between the two buildings is what is requiring the 30 feet.
Right.
So that's incorrect. That's what we should be considering.
If, if we were building this a block inland, this requirement wouldn't even exist and we'd be permitted to build right to the line. Just, just to clarify. So I don't want to make up requirements.
Talked about, you know, modifications and you're saying, well, it might cause a curb cut here.
So, yeah, so for example, a curb cutting driveway is $3,000.
Is how much?
$30,000. It's $10,000 just to do the curb cut. Ask Carlo. It's crazy. Would you like me to send you the quote? I don't agree with it. That's why we're trying, I don't agree with it. That's why we're trying to work with what we got. Um, the other thing is the client's willing to take a contingent approval if we move it all the way north, if that would get it done. So we'd abandon the driveway.
In other words, take the footprint of the building and move the building north.
As far as possible.
As far as possible, because you have no existing structure to the north side.
Correct. So well, we still need a variance according to current interpretation. Yes. So is that
Right. We can only allow, we can only change the variance one and a half feet, or it would have to be a second variance, which would have to be re-advertised and you'd have to come back next month in order for you to, in order for us to say, move it to the property line. It's another variance.
Okay, so let's, let's forget about the bureaucracy for a second. Is, is that more palatable conceptual wise? So maybe see you next month? If required.
Your call, my friend.
Okay, what about the other one? What about the first request?
We'll figure out, Mike.
We're a little bit concerned about building it up to the, the very edge of the street, right? Um, I don't know what that implicates in terms of, um, I mean, I, I think part of the reason for the setback is so, is to maintain the right of way both for pedestrians and vehicles. And so I'm just, you know, as a city attorney, I'm always interested in preserving the municipal right of way. And I don't know how this, how this, if he actually built right up to the edge of the street.
We wouldn't be building right up to the edge of the street. I would build right up to the limit of our setback which is forward of all the other buildings.
No, that you, you're on a corner lot, so you have two setback requirements, correct?
Right.
And on the, this is 123rd Street, we're okay right here. And on the hun, this is one hundred and twenty-third street, we're okay right here. If you look beyond you.
This might help as well, so this is a neighboring building, this is what we're posing. So we're allowed to, what is, what is the front setback?
One setback is zero. Oh, here, you can take that one, I have another copy.
Right, so we're permitted to build out to here.
The front's on the corner lot?
Yeah. Going in one direction and then the side is. Five, so then we'd be five off of that.
So the one hundred and twenty-third street is five foot seven.
Yes, but the one hundred and twenty-third street has a lot of. I don't even know who would own that, would the city own that, whatever that width is, it's a ton of space from our property to the actual curb.
We think the city owns that.
Right, so then similarly going to the front, it's not that we're, we would build a street, we build to the. Possibly build to the, by right, front setback. Which pulls that building forward.
In front of all the other buildings.
Yes. Which as a designer, I don't, I don't think is great.
There's no measurement on here, but it looks to be. Like. Fifteen feet from the property line to like the edge of pavement is what it looks to be. Just so you guys know. I'm eyeballing off the drawing, it's not dimensioned.
Yeah, it's dimension on the survey, but it's ten point three. Does that sound right? Were you saying fifteen? It's.
Your mo, either this application. Um. It's that drawing, it's not dimensioned, but. Just that mention.
Oh, going, yeah, going to one hundred and twenty-third, yeah, that's, that's like.
How much room do you have? Proposed plan. And public access.
So public access would be the sum of, that's six, six plus the twelve, four, so eighteen, ten, nineteen feet. From the edge of our core, let's say, to our lot line. That's not, well, well, remember, we have two stories that's up above. Right, so we got to shift the whole block. You follow what I'm saying, it's not just that, at grade.
Is this still accurate, more or less, as far as an elevation?
Uh, yes, but that wasn't submitted with this application.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Basically, the elevation. Um. All the dominoes. I'm just, I'm just, I wanted to see what the elevation was, it happened to be in the other one, I would have asked for it tonight if I hadn't.
I'll show, I'll show you some renderings after. You know, the other dominos are a trade in site plan review, like, right now, we do not. Require site plan review, as soon as we put a driveway in, do something else to the ground. Off you go, we're just trying to get started with this building, where we've been here twice, this is our second time. It's been a year in the approvals process. Angie can speak to the, everyone's, it's new zoning cover, trying to figure it out, everyone's trying to figure it out. So, and we're just trying to get something going. We've met with the city engineer, we've talked with economic development. New commissioner. Um, we're just trying to get. Something started here. I'm sorry, from, oh, the engineer. Says, why are we putting this, these people through the wringer? Economic development says, it's the law, just do what it says. But no one's interpreting the law with us. Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing that you guys are caught in the middle, right, like, you're, you're trying to negotiate. Like, what's the hardest that you can try, redesign the whole thing so you can meet someone, well, I think that's stupid. It's fine here. But I don't have hard numbers, right, like, you don't believe that a curb cut costs ten thousand, but I can show you the quote. If you'd like, I'd email it to you. I'm astounded as well, this is one, me too, and if we were to do a curb cut. Off to planning you go, and now everyone else has their pitchforks out. So we're just trying to get the zoning done, so we at least know what we can build. And then we can layer up stuff like. I don't know, a shrub. A new driveway, whatever, that will send us to planning. Because we're on a corner lot, or whatever they say.
Did you guys have any other questions before I take it to public comment?
Uh, just one, uh, thought to flesh out the, the approach of a conditional, of approval. Any, any, you know, thoughts to flesh out that approach?
I believe that the only conditional approval we could offer tonight is. That it be shifted one, one and a half feet to the north. If we are requesting or prefer the applicant come back to us with a proposal that should sit closer to the side. Um. The sideline, the front sideline, then it requires a second variance. Yes.
Building were shipped. So if the building were shifted. Five feet to the north, that would go to that dark black line, that's where your, what the cursor is. And the area beyond it. Is that all part of the right of way?
Uh, yeah, you say right of way, it's, it's not ours, it's basically just grass, and then there's a slide.
My interpretation is, yes, that is the public right of way. As an engineer, not a surveyor.
Not all street.
Correct, where it's curved is where the start, there's. There's a lot of space.
If you go back to the Googly. Take a look.
If the city were to put it, want to put a sidewalk in on that side, there would still be sufficient room in right of way for them to do that.
You don't want to do that, because it's a hill.
Yeah. Now, it'd be.
That shows us.
Yeah, be about fifteen feet back, or ten to fifteen feet back.
Right, so my, without looking at the surveys, we're probably up to where this was built. Right, maybe there were some steps here or something back, hey? That'd be my guess, is that's the property line. Correct. So it's, it's kind of.
The edge of the green where it beats the street, is there a curb there, or is there not a curb?
Yes.
There is.
There is a curb and there is not a curb, some of it's curved. Is this where you're talking, curb, no curb, there's a little curb. The, the topo there is brutal.
What?
Topography, the hell starts. Right, again, we were looking to just, we've got a driveway.
Yeah, I think because you're adjacent to public street preferences, but. Sorry, I keep coming back, I want to hear the public comment to see if there are other people that have comments. Um. Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment or against this project? All right, Angie, is there anyone online that has comments related to this project?
Um, Ellen Barnum does, if I'm, you can hear me.
Yes, we can, can you state your, uh, address or approximate location of where you live, and then tell us your comment?
I, I live in the first building and, uh, second floor of the building that's on the south side of eight thirteen, I live at eight eleven.
Okay.
Uh, just, just as a little history, a person that lived before in that house, it was a, it was a two-story house, but it was a single family home. He had two vehicles, that's one of my concern is, um, this building, one of the variances is going to be three stories and I'm. I, I think I'm assuming that the bottom story is going to be where the, where the pillars will be, that'll raise the house up above the floodplain, it won't be a living space. Then it will be two, two family above that.
Two floors above.
Yeah, two floors, two family.
Correct.
Okay. Um, then I was concerned about parking, because I mean, the guy that lived there before, single family, he had two vehicles, one was in the driveway, the other one was on the street. If this is going to become a two-family home, um, I'm wondering where the parking is, is it going to be underneath the house, is the house being raised up enough? That the parking will be underneath the house?
The, the, yes, they, the driveway will go underneath the structure.
Okay. Okay, then, um. And there will be a site, you were talking about bringing the house forward, will there still be a sidewalk?
Uh, yeah, the sidewalk is located within the right of way, um, so nothing we'd be talking about here today would impact the, the sidewalk.
Okay, and then you're going to be moved, you're talking about moving the house pop, possibly north, so that would me, mean, it would be further away from the so. From us, the southern house, because that public right of way is important, you were talking about fire. That house burned down, and I was here, living here when that house burned down, and the fireman said that if the wind was right. That our house would have probably been involved, so it was, it was imperative to me that it was nice that if you will move it north, it will be even further away if. And God forbid, in case of fire, for both houses, you know. The closer you are, of course, the more opportunity there is for a fire to, to spread between two houses. But you are talking about moving the house further n- north away from the house on the south, so making that. Right away between the two houses even wider than it may already have been when the previous structure was there.
That's what we're discussing tonight, the, the variance request. About the distance. Your structure and this proposed structure, yes.
Okay, I understand that, um, my, my neighbor, she lives down the first floor, I don't know if she has any questions.
I think you pretty much covered it.
Okay.
That he didn't answer all those questions.
Yeah, well, yeah, he didn't answer all the questions on the, on the, I think it was the environmental thing, um, the shoreline, but I. I don't know how important those are to the, the vari, the zoning and variance. It was an environmental questionnaire that, that was included in his documentation.
Yeah, the seeker form. Did you guys have any comments or questions related to the seeker form for the applicant?
Wait a minute, let, just we pulled that up. There were a couple of questions that he, he didn't answer, and I guess it was, it's an environmental impact, um, form that he's filling out.
Well, number eight, I don't think he answered.
Number eight, will the, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic on, above present levels?
Of course it would.
And it will, because there will be another extra family than, than there was before. Um, like I said, it was one person, it was, it was, I think it was considered a single family home. And, um, on question.
Fourteen, there's no answer.
Fourteen, he didn't identify typical habitat types that occur on. Or are likely to be found on the project site. It is a shoreline, it is, it is a wetland, I think it would be considered a wetland. Um, or, let's see, urban, the, I, I think it's nominal whether or not he checked those boxes, but they are, they are part of the form. Oh, I did, I do have a question about moving the, the thing north, that is a boat launch. And the person that lived before, he told me that part of his property on the northern side. Was taken over by the city. And I think it was, I think he even included that in case they wanted to put a sidewalk in there, and I think you did mention that. So a portion of that northern border is, I think, city property or city right of way.
The, what we have before us is, um, property lines completed by a surveyor recently. Is it? What ti, what year was the survey completed? Within the last few years? Okay, yeah, so the, the property lines we're looking at are, are recent survey.
Okay, and then, and when the surveyor comes in, he knows where the city right of way is and where the property, actual property line is too, that's part of. What his information is when he does, okay, I understand that, thank you.
Any other comments?
Not from us.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else online looking for, uh, that has comments related to this project? No? Is there anyone that was in chat, was commenting, or is that? Yes, they, it was two people that was listening, the first floor and second floor. Because there are certain things that require planning commission approval and certain things that don't. Yes, um. Any follow-up questions for the applicant following public comment? My other view. Are they still online? Okay. All right.
Does the applicant have any more, any information to address the issue of, um. The traffic, uh, count, anything? Raised by the public comment?
It's, it's my opinion that that traffic, that form you use if you're going to build a Walmart. So this is two family, it's, I understand people's concerns, but this is negligible.
Been to conferences, they acknowledge that, but since these things are, are checked.
We want to keep the driveway. So we're about to lose that driveway, so we will be parking on the street. There's no parking requirements for zoning.
Um, yeah, so traffic engineer, usually, uh, trips of a hundred more, hundred or more trips during the peak hour is what. Is considered substantial, or you're a traffic impact study or something like that, um. Yeah. So, um, I would propose, uh, that we table this. Um, and let the applicant come back with, encourage the applicant to come back with a revised proposal for. A basically two variances to move this adjacent to the northern property line.
I would.
Northern, yes.
If that's viewed as a, a motion, I would second that.
I'll make a motion to.
Well, should it, is it better to withdraw it, maybe the attorney can help. We will, if we have to come back anyway, we're, we can draw.
Or we can. Doesn't.
Whatever. And if we change our proposal to apply. Right, then we're not coming back. Who, who, do, do you guys know who interprets this requirement?
No, I don't.
I don't either, and nobody at the city knows either.
I wish I.
If we. Correct, correct, I don't think the view, I don't, I'm, there's something wrong with the view shed requirement. Ri- ri- right, so it, it's really the question we're talking about, is the variance for, uh, twenty feet or twenty-five feet. Which, which is effectively get a negative now, or. Wouldn't you, if I demand, if I demanded an answer, I'd demand an answer, you guys, yeah, yeah.
What you've ex. What you've explained, you have experienced a, a, a long history or some history, and we understand that, but. We want to, um, see what can be done in giving you options. That's, that's how I see it.
Oh, yeah, sure, table that thing. Um, does the attorney know who? does the attorney know who would interpret the view shed requirement? Or who we can talk to, to interpret that?
And that's why you're here, you're here for everything that we did.
Right, so do the other two members agree that we're required to provide sixty feet through our property? That is fifty feet, but?
We will agree to confer with counsel on how to address these inquiry.
Yeah, I guess that's not entirely fair. It's not like I'm gonna take your answer and apply it, but I'm, I'm honestly, and, and my client has been talking to everyone trying to negotiate something to build here, and it's, we just keep going around. Right, and it's, everyone has different ideas about what's important. Fire, view shed.
And I think your explanations today have helped us clarify or, or approach, uh, clarification, but we're not there yet.
Fair enough. Right, so does that, I mean, we're trying, right, like the, the areas, the reason we're not quick to, to cut the building size, we're, we already negotiate. We thought, but there's not, not with you.
You have to apply the law to the facts.
Right, but.
Clarify those.
Yeah, so we're, we're committed to build something crankier and bigger. We don't think it's right for the neighborhood and we would like some consideration for that session. Maybe that's what I'm trying to say. Next time.
Yeah, I, well, and I think, I, you know, I'm also background, I mean, a number of other variances have already been granted for this property, and so we just want to make sure that we're re, you know, reducing the impact to neighbors, et cetera, and, and granting any additional support property. Um, but I always say it, you know, I'm favorable of the, the ground variance, if you happen to make a motion on that tonight, or you can table the entire application and.
Well, we can't.
Can we?
We can't proceed to building permit.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Also, so you all, well, request.
And that's. Yes.
Putting down the whole payment.
So I'll make a motion to table this application until the next meeting.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Who pulled it?
Oh, did you, is this an extra copy we can keep, or do you want to take this with you?
Whatever.
I can, I can hold on to it if you don't want it. I'll add it to my stack.
Thank you.
I think we're gonna. I'll, I'll, I'll hold on. Thank you. Have good evening.
It might be helpful for us to get, or get help.
That's, this is.
These are in the application.
The latest.
Oh, yeah, these two are in the latest application.
Right, but the.
I didn't bring anything.
Right, right, but there's. Right, we'll, we'll confer.
We're good. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. How am I doing so far, Rick? Alright. Next item on the agenda. Um, PLZBA twenty twenty-four zero zero eighteen, five fifty-eight River Street. This is for a use variance, an area variance. Good evening.
Good evening. So my name is Nathana Betty. I'm with the applicant, uh, Planting Square ESG Partners, uh, who owns the building at five five eight River Street, so it's the future home of Bargain Grocery Troy. I know, Angie, could you pull up my, um, submissions that I brought in? So I need an, an area variance for some tenant signage that we're looking to install above the entry to the premises. We could start with that. That's the simpler of the two variances we're asking for. It's the next one down, is, uh. So that's a spreadsheet of the signage for our tenant bargain groceries, uh, uh, low cost but great quality grocery store from Utica that we're bringing to Troy. In a, a very important project to us as a developer. Troy is a food desert right now with no grocery store in existence in entirety of downtown. So bargain grocery will help solve that problem. So to get them to have the right, uh, branding and presence in this market, felt a sign of the scale that we've, uh, shown in this mock-up, next page down, Angie, is needed just to give them a good market presence and have some good curb appeal for people driving by on River Street. So this space is south onto River Street as you go underneath the Housers Street Bridge and go north. Um, and that's our new storefront entrance that we built on the south side of the property that directly communicates with our parking area to the south that comes in off of, uh, who's it, for ease of access. So there's a use, or an area variance, um, that we're asking for, just to have the scale of the sign be appropriate to the place we're mounting it. If we had kept it to the size that was allowed under the current zoning, we felt it would kind of feel out of scale. So what's here for the background?
Anything else? You got a question? We're not interrupting.
Can we go back to that picture, please? Over the main entrance.
Next one down.
That's a rendering, correct?
This is a rendering, yes.
Okay, so that is what you're proposing.
Yes.
And what you're saying is you want to go from forty-eight square feet to that which reflects the seventy square feet.
Correct.
But that would reflect the size of the seventy square feet relative and in proportion to the building.
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Is that similar to the sign in Utica?
They have a different, um, setup in Utica, so this is a, a type use of a historic building for Bargain Grocery Troy. Utica is a new construction that was built about five years ago, though. They just have a, a sign over their entrance canopy. So different type of canvas, I would say, for how it's set up there. I don't know, Angie, if you can look up the Utica store in Google.
What's that, Rick?
Um, what is their address out there? You're better off just Googling Bargain Grocery Utica.
Store.
No, well, yes, that's the other entrance off of River Street. So when this building was Smith Beauty, that was the main entrance that people used. It was a wholesale, uh, beauty supply place. So there was a small retail area just inside maybe these first two windows. This sign is here. We temporarily put a new graphic over this just to show people it's coming, but that's not the permanent signage that we want people to enter through. The new entrance comes down at the south side down over this way. I don't think the entrance canopy is built in Google Earth yet, but that's, this is where that canopy entrance is constructed now. So everyone can park here off-street coming off of Housak where we have a DOT lot that we lease under the bridge. And that also flows through here where we have, it's a thirty-car, um, parking lot.
So does the sign? Stop molding, I'm trying to gain a perspective. Is the sign on the blank wall to the right of the door facing the parking lot?
It's right here. Where we want to put it.
Is it hanging out, or is it?
No, it's flush. It's flush to the wall. It's not an extruded box for backlighting.
This is to the blank.
Yes.
Got it. I don't have any other questions.
Am I correct that there are two applicants here, one for the sign square footage and one for the murals?
Yes, so I can talk about the mural now if, or should, can we go through this motion first and they're kind of separate issues? There are two, there's a use variance and an area variance, gray variance, use variance is the other side.
Correct. Discuss them all together and we can handle whatever.
That's fine. So Angie, could you go back to my other submission and I think I sent you, I might not have sent you a photo of the completed north wall, but Google Earth will have the canvas I'm talking about, so what we're, um, we have a small conundrum with how the zoning code is written and the type of art installation we'd like to do. So Kevin Clark is here with me, uh, who's our artist, who has done several wonderful murals throughout Troy and throughout Capitol District and all over the place. But where's the furthest south you've gone for? So all of them down the east coast. And Kevin does wonderful work. He actually did the mural for our, um, food hall downstairs in this building, River Street Market that looks fantastic, south, uh, uh, looking south on River Street. So we've asked Kevin, could you come do something similar for the north wall of five five eight River Street, which right now is just a blank stucco gray wall? And there's two reasons we wanted to put an art installation there. One is just beautification to make the intersection of Vanderheiden and River just a more pleasant space to walk through and interact and just put some beautification into that side of five five eight River that forever that we've driven by it has just been graffiti and overgrown vines and everything. So we now have their, uh, loading dock that is gonna help feed the grocery store with fresh products every day or every couple of days. But we want to beautify the backdrop of it with some art installation. So this is just a sample board that we came up with for different types of, um, work that we would propose putting on there. But the way the zoning code is written, if we have anything in the yard installation that has to do with the operations of the tenant, which is a grocery store, it is treated as advertising and not as art, so it required the use variance. So we filled out the application and came here tonight just to go through that and explain. That's what we have to do now is go through that process. This is just an idea sheet of what we are coming up with. Just go down a little bit more, Angie. Some of the bottom stuff is cut up, but we're trying to brighten up the, uh, north wall of the building and not have it be just a blank gray monolith like it is right now. When we did our historic renovation for the building, we've had the park service to agree. It was an old, um, just parched finish. Because I think there was another building up against that in the corner of Vanderheiden Street on the old tax maps that we found. So they let us leave it in that state. What we're wanting to do now that we're almost done with the project, just our CO a couple of weeks ago from the code inspector officials. We want to get it ready to open for bargains operations, and I think this will help make it a more welcoming and appealing place to shop than just leaving it a big gray blank space. It also helps track from people who would think of putting tags on it, and that's been a problem for us. And not just this building, but a lot of our holdings in Troy. If you leave open blank areas that are just don't have anything on them, it's like a moth to a flame for someone with a can of spray paint that wants to put their own mark on things, which some people like it, we really don't. We'd rather put something more like this on that wall to make it a more appropriate art, um, installation. I think Kevin is one of the best people to do that.
Questions?
Would that artist rendition occupy the entire north wall?
Yes.
Or would it be like a picture and the rest of the north wall as a frame around?
We'd like to do the whole wall. Um, could you go to Google Earth, Angie, and just see if we can go around the corner? I don't think it's got the current, uh, view. Just go up the street to Vanderheiden's intersection, and we can peer around the corner to show the surface we're talking about. Right, so if you spin around, so this wall's been completely, uh, repaired. There was a lot of, uh, crumbling bricks exposed. So we reparched this whole wall stucco, so this is a clean gray canvas, and the new loading dock was built right in this section. So we have this large gray monolithic surface now. What we'd like to do is do the entire surface area from the corner out to the River Street edge with an art installation. Kevin last week just did a mock-up to do just the roundo of bargain grocery go up in this corner. But we don't know what our final design is for the mural contents around it. We don't know if we'll do just fresh food. We don't know if we'll do uh, old-time downtown scene in Troy, like Kevin's done some of that. He's one in this building, and he's done some in other places. We're trying to figure out the final scheme, but because there's potential for us to do food products as part of the art, the way the code is written, it interprets that as advertising and needs to go through zoning. It can't just be treated as art installation. It doesn't have to come for a use variance. Correct.
Is the intent to do any other, um, I guess, words, so to speak, other than the grocery store logo? And do you have roughly an idea of what size you intend that to be?
It depends. I mean, Kevin's creative, and we go through a lot of different iterations of things. Except, we did a lot of stuff for the mural on the south stair tower of this building before we ended up with the false window, um, display that actually was part of four thirty-one River Street, was the building attached to this one that was knocked down in the mid-sixties. So we're trying to go through the creative process and figure out what we want to do. It could be, if you go back to the example, she, Angie, that we do something that has some could just do like the one that says, um, if you go up to the top. This was a Whole Foods in Vernon Hills, Illinois. Could do something like Troy that kind of emphasizes more of the city that we're in and emphasizes Troy pride. But it also could be a blend of different elements that have this as well, and there's a lot of opportunities, but what we wanted to do is make sure we're not making the wrong step by not coming here in case we do want to include any food associated with the operations of the building, which obviously is, it's grocery store. Probably not, because bargain grocery really deals with a wide range of brands, so we wouldn't be sponsored by any um, type of food product or anything. We'd all do just another stuff.
Rick, my concern with granting the variance, I like the idea of the murals. My concern with granting a variance is that we open it up to the applicant being able to make the decision after the fact to turn the entire wall into their logo, logo and/or provide a bunch of branding. I realize you're saying you're not going to.
Right, how is this thing? So Kevin and I were talking. Um, we got our turn at the microphone. So the area of the sign that he's just done a a chalk outline of, could you go back to Google Earth, Angie? Sorry to make you go back and forth all the time. There's a round outline that he actually just chalked over here on the corner. That's the extent of bargain grocery signage branding that we would put there. And it was that clear there. I think it was seventy-five square feet. If I did my geometry measuring correct, it's a nine-foot, um, diameter circle that he has marked up right now. I took a picture of it that I could share the board members. So this is a photo of what Kevin has marked up just with tape and chalk. So that would be the extent of bargain grocery, um, verbiage, for lack of a better term, and then the rest like the, um, idea board that we send in with our application, it would be more mural type of art installation. So we don't want to plaster the entire wall with just bargain grocery. I don't think that's helpful. We'd like to do more artwork-inspired installation that is going to enhance the quality of the neighborhood, add some beauty to a corner that's been neglected for a long time. And just make it a nicer. And just make it a nicer. Uh better curb appeal building for a lot of people to use, which we're excited to open this in the next few months and have. The access to healthy food that everyone's been waiting for in downtown for a long time.
Rick, can can we put a contingency on this, but in a branding essentially is restricted due to certain square footage, is that a reasonable condition? To be placed on approval?
Did you could?
Well, that's what it is. That's what it is. On this brick is it's a seventy five square foot. Circle. It's actually less than that, but that's all we've marked out for. What bargain grocery logo would be there.
But the condition of that maximum saw.
Yes. And we're happy with that, I mean.
Any other questions? Rick, any other questions? Or comments, Rick, do you have comments, information to relay to us? That you would like to relate?
But you are seeking a use variance. For the other side, for the south, for the south side. Because of the way the code is wrote. Because you might be showing. It doesn't.
Circle. But then also because. We may want to put some food products in the art installation itself, because food being sold in premises. And the code says. Treated as more. Sign piece, not just.
Have to see the code, can you pull up the code section? Because um. You're not going to be advertising specific brands that you're selling. And and. Yeah. Because the usual tests for use variance, you have to meet all four are that. You couldn't get a reasonable return. The hardship is unique to your property, uh. The requested variance would not alter the character of the neighborhood, I agree with that, but. And the alleged hardship has not self-created. Not sure.
Yeah, this usually seems like it seems more like an area variance than a use variance.
Yeah, that's how I'm looking at it, but but need to.
Send your staff notes too.
That was done for.
So wouldn't that just mean that it needs a permit? Out of variance?
Yes, so yeah, that is.
Could we argue?
Yeah, so these are actually signed that are. Then because it's. That's part of product.
You're allowed to sign your bill. Right, you're you're allowed to have advertising. And what is? What what is, so what is the limit on this time? Well. I'm I'm differentiating between the two here, I don't, I don't think. That you can. That necessarily goes under a use there. Because the only products that I'd be concerned with are ones that are either branded. Or. And then then their logo is is a sign. That is governed by our. So it has to be a certain size, right, but I mean they can have it. But I'm I'm not sure that the rest of the mural. Really qualifies as. Sign, an advertising. If you know what I mean. For purposes of. Getting a use there.
You're interpreting that product as something that's specifically labeled, not painting an apple and you guys sell apples. Is is how you're interpreting it, if I understand it correctly.
Essentially, yes.
Name brand products.
You're talking about a generic product with the name brand.
That's a, that's what, that's what they're seeming to be proposing in this mural, it's sort of like. Here's a grocery store, we here, we carry saltines, but maybe not. You know, keever or something like that. I'm just having. I don't know. Well, I'm not sure how you'd meet the test for a use there. Signs exempt from permitting. Or graphics and murals that. I think they just need a permit.
Yeah.
Applicants received a PC approval for the bargain grocery, it's an area variance for exceeding allowed sign area. We'll see a lot of sign area. So.
So we were one of the last projects approved under the old zoning. And the old zoning actually had a larger signage allowance for our district, we used to be Hewitt's waterfront district. So when the zoning changed, the sign allowance was reduced. So if we were submitting this. Just before the code change a year ago. We actually wouldn't be asking for the area variance for the sign that's going over the front entrance, we would be within the allowed thresholds. For whatever reason. Oh, didn't remember bargain grocery was going here when it changed everything, so. Look, we'll go do the area variance, we don't mind, that's, I don't think that's a controversial ask before this board, uh zoning board. But we want to make sure that when bargain grocery opens. They have the market presence that's needed to succeed and that everyone can find them, I think. Putting these graphics and signs on the building is necessity to make that happen. And we're trying to help them open. More facilities in Capitol Districts is important to do the first one very well, so that when we do. Albany or Schenectady, wherever else we can find another home for them. People know, oh, that's the guys that opened in Troy and they came from Utica and they're doing all this great stuff for. Food insecure areas, so we want to. Make sure that this first one is done to the highest level and I think this. Request from our team is. A good way to help ensure that.
If uh the permit route is pursued. Could a condition be added just? To um make uh. Enforceable uh or or certain that there in the future, there would be no specific product branding. I mean, we have the assurances today. But to put it in whatever document.
Put it in the form of the motion.
Well, can we memorialize this basically that we're referring this back to the city, this element mural? Back to the city for permitting as long as it is. Generic products, no name difference.
Going forward.
Right.
How do we do that?
Official concern.
Don't have a lot of expertise in this area, okay, but but my concern is that. The test for a use variance, you have to meet all four.
Yeah.
And you have to um. It's it's for, it's it doesn't seem to me that. That.
Fits.
This this fits really, I mean, it's not, it's not uh the the only part that. Really fits is the size of the the signage itself. There's no copy involved in this in this mural as far as I know, other than the bargain grocery logo. Uh there's no reference to uh, you know. It's not an advertising sign, it's it's except for it's it's an identification. Of the building and what and what it is, it's a grocery store. The mural itself is be is as I think the applicant has said, of of beautification. And I don't think that that falls under. Falls under a use variance, at least under our code, right?
No, we we all.
So you're agreed on that, right? So. So so I mean, I think that the applicant has to, I think that this should be referred back to the city, to the administration, pardon? For for a permitting application.
You know, the first part of the variance that you request about sign over the.
That that seems to me uh easy for you to, that's determinable by this board.
So my only question in reference to that, Rick, is how do I get Kevin to start on the mural?
And what, what do you, what do you plan to get him to start?
Soon as we could get him out there, I have a man left ready for him to jump up there and start painting.
Weather suit, weather is already suitable.
Pretty nice right now, seventy one degrees today.
Not coming back here, no.
Who would issue this permit?
So I just talked to. Are they gonna get angry if he? Is out there tomorrow painting stuff? That's my.
I think you ought to see Carlo first.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's give him a motion.
Uh the.
The area variance is the.
First. We don't have any public comment here, is there anyone online for public comment? Do my due diligence. Uh do we have anyone that would like to make a comment regarding this project? Or something related to bargain grocery?
Yes, Samantha, I see your question, so hello. Um we did put this sign. Free for um proof into our uh part two amendment for the historic tax credit process and they approve it, so we're good with them. That's the only approval we have.
Can you read the question?
She's asking, does the bargain grocery proposed art, do you go through historical reviews, so the artist not, because they've done that on this building, they don't. Cares much about murals. The signage does and the signage has gone through the historic approvals in our amendments we filed with the. Shippo and Park Service.
Oh. I don't think this is followed the move of. No one.
No, we're out of the districts, it's it's not that, it's they're asking, does the mural have to go through the process? Well, there is a historic district. Three or four blocks south of us, but we're not, we are on the register now. But that's different than the um the downtown historic districts, that's a city. Layer for planning and zoning.
If they wanted to do, sorry, Rick. If they wanted to do the bargain grocery icon on their mural. Would then, who would then kick it back to us because it's a painted sign? Can we uh basically pass a an area variance that allows signage on the building to. Be up to a certain square footage?
I believe that Angie said that the signage on the code is forty eight.
Yeah.
This would be greater than the relief I'm asking for in the area. This would add seventy five. It would add. I'm asking for twenty two square feet of relief on the south side. So this would add, it'd be a hundred feet almost, it is seventy five square feet on the south side to be part of Kevin's installation. But it's in its twenty two feet. Larger for the um. Regular building sign is. No, but the whole building, I'm saying, because we have a limit of. Is it forty eight feet?
Is it total signage or any one sign, so how is the food?
Sales total.
But uh the individual sign.
May, a maximum individual is forty.
I guess that's a decision for Carlo, but we can get through the. The wall sign, talk Carlo, you can get the mural started and then if you're painting the logo. They may or may not kick you back.
Two types of variance are, it's a very similar intake form, right, and fill out a lot of the same questions. So could you kick? The use variance to an area variance? And grant that, and I'll still talk to Carlo about. The details of it, but I do want to get Kevin started while the weather.
For user, yeah. And then another application for everywhere, they have.
And did you get my fees for the experience? We dropped off the fees, so yeah, so we're, we have all that done too. The one side is twenty two feet and the other side is, let's say, seventy five minus forty eight. Would be twenty seven feet.
So what happens to? What happens to their the sixty?
Um two. So how big is the south side time?
It's a.
Seventy square.
Seventy square feet.
Yes. But even if it's over twenty, thirty?
We need twenty two.
Seventy five minus twelve. Sixty three. Would be the excess. Or the requested relief.
Twenty two on the south.
Can we do that?
Without a new application, not sure. I would prefer to have a new application.
The new sign will be, how many square feet?
Seventy. That's the main sign, the main sign, while they're close, it's seventy five feet, like Kevin and me, it's a nine foot diameter circle. So it's a little bit less than seventy five. We rounded up.
Okay. If we just need to double back and do it again next month. Anyone?
The first one on the north side, twenty two square feet relief and on the south side.
South side's twenty two.
So.
Yeah.
Other way around.
No, it's the other way around.
Yep. Twenty two square feet of relief on the south side and sixty three square feet of relief on the north. Yeah, now he'll, he does a sketch and we can provide that to Carlo if he wants. Yeah. He's a big fan of your, you know. You did Browns too.
Do we have a motion to convert this use variance?
Right, um, you want to do the sign on the, um, south side first and get that out of the way. Okay. All right, I move to approve the, um, application for a uh, relief of twenty-two square feet, uh, area, uh, variance request uh, for the applicant, um, with regards to a branded wall sign, um, on the south side. The variance, uh, will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. Uh, contrary to that, it's actually, uh, working towards, uh, countering the the a food desert situation, which is quite laudable. Um, and, um, we also have the artist here who has shown his works in the building that we're in today. Um, the benefit sought by the applicant may not be achieved by some feasible, uh, method uh, to, uh, as as he explained today, uh, to, um, show his presence or the 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 grocery's presence and thereby, uh, work towards, um, countering, uh, the food desert situation. Uh, the requested variance is not substantial. Um, and the variance, if granted, will not have an adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And the alleged difficulty is not self-created. Uh, I move, uh, for approval of the, um, uh, area variance based on those, um, reasons.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One down.
Try the second one.
You did it so well the first.
Um, with regards to the application for a use variance for a mural, um, on the, um, uh, north side. I move to have the use variance, um, converted to an area variance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, for the details of that, uh, motion, um, base. Oh, for the, uh, okay.
What is now an area.
Support the now, um, approved conversion, correct?
Motion is whether or not to approve.
The area variance that we've now approved the conversion of from use to area. Okay. So, um, the relief requested eh, for the mural size is for a relief of sixty-three square feet. And with the, um, conditions or understanding that there would be no, uh, specific product branding. And with a maximum size of, uh, I think you said seventy-five feet. Right, of of the ultimate, um, product, uh, or the ultimate mural. Uh, the variance, uh, as described and as conditioned, will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment, again, for the same, uh, reasons, uh, discussed before, countering the food desert situation. Uh, the benefits sought by the applicant may not be achieved by some, uh, feasible method other than the proposed variance, again, due to location and due to the current, uh, food desert situation. Uh, the requested variance is not substantial. And, uh, the variance, if granted, will not have, uh, an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Again, we have the, uh, artist here who has done work on the building that, uh, we're in today. And, uh, so we know, uh, what it will, the the the.
Quality of work.
Quality of work. Thank you. Um, and lastly, uh, the alleged difficulty is not self-created. Uh, the existence of the food desert situation is, uh, acknowledged. Um, based on on those, uh, reasons, uh, I move to approve, uh, this, uh, area variance.
Second the motion.
I'd like to make a quick amendment just to clarify that this area variance directly relates to, um, the bargain grocery icon on the building and that the mural itself would be referred to code enforcement for permit approval.
My motion is so am it.
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of the motion as amended. Sorry. Aye.
I just said I.
All right.
We're good.
We're good.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for bearing with us. Um. Anything else?
Like to move, we adjourn.
Second that.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.